Good morning, everyone. I would like to call to order the regular board meeting of Tuesday, May 20, 2025. As is our custom, we begin our board meetings with the singing of our national anthem. We're very honoured today to have a pre-recorded video of students from New Brighton School singing "O Canada". I would ask everyone to please stand and follow the lead of the students. The Calgary Board of Education acknowledges the traditional territories and oral practices of the Treaty Seven nations, including the Sig Sig Kaitzitzapi, comprised of the Sigzigga, the Gayna, the Begani, and the Amscapa-Begani nations. We acknowledge the Sutena nation, De Yarhe Nakota, comprised of the Taniki, Berispa, and Good Stony nations, the Maiti nation within Alberta, and all people who make their homes in the Treaty Seven region of southern Alberta. This land on which we gather is traditionally known as Moginsitis, Guccise, Winchispa, and Otusquini. As a learning organisation, we are committed to advancing the truth and reconciliation calls to action focused on education for reconciliation. Oki, daranastara, amba wastich, tansay, tani she, bonjour, hello, and welcome to all of our staff and public in attendance at this meeting. Representing our stakeholder groups, I would like to recognise Stephanie Clements from the Alberta Teachers' Association, Local 38, Clay Gordon from the Canadian Union of Public Employees, Local 40, and representing the Elementary School Principals' Association and the Principals' Association for Adolescent Learners, we have Jennifer Batik. Our first item of business is to approve the agenda for today's meeting. Ms. Minor, do you have any changes that need to be noted?
Madam Chair, the following agenda changes requests has... Agenda change requests have been received. That item 9.1.1, Office of the Board of Trustees 2025-26 Operating Budget Report, be removed from the consent agenda and added as item 8.2 under Matters Reserved for Board Decision. And that item 9.2.1, Chief Superintendent's Update Report, be removed from the consent agenda and added as item 7.3 under Matters Reserved for Board Information.
Thank you. Could I have a motion that the agenda be approved with the proposed changes? Thank you, trustee. Close, those in favour of the motion? That is carried unanimously. Our next item of business deals with results focus. Today on our agenda is annual monitoring of results five character. Chief Superintendent Pittman, would you please introduce the report?
Good morning, Chair Bolger and trustees. It is with pride and optimism that we share the monitoring report for results five character. This report provides evidence from the 2023-24 school year that learners in the Calgary Board of Education continue to act in ways that are ethical and responsible, contributing to a positive learning environment for all. Overall, we continue to see high results for students as reflected in our report card indicators, and notably, 97.8% of students are demonstrating strength in making responsible decisions and an impressive 98.7% in treating others with respect and compassion. These numbers are more than statistics, they are a testament to the values that we are nurturing in our classrooms and hallways every day. Turning to the CBE Student Survey summary measures, we continue to see strong levels of student agreement across key areas of personal and social development. Six of the seven summary measures have overall agreement levels over 88%, and four of these are over 90%. There are also specific areas where we've seen meaningful improvement. For example, student agreement with the statement "When I'm upset with someone, I try to understand their point of view" rose by 1.3 percentage points to 86.6%. This is a powerful indicator of growing emotional intelligence and conflict resolution skills. Overall, these results show that our students are not only learning academic content, but are also growing into thoughtful, ethical, and empathetic individuals. I'll now turn to Superintendent Jennifer Turner to provide further detail on the results.
Thank you, Chair Bolger, trustees. The report before you includes evidence from nine indicators, two of which are report card measures, and the remaining seven are connected to the CBE Student Survey. For two report card indicators, it should be noted that only data for students in grades seven, eight, and nine are included, as report card results reporting was suspended for kindergarten to grade six students for the 2023-2024 school year. As well, for six of seven measures connected to the CBE Student Survey, the only data available for comparison is from the 2020-2021 school year, the last time these specific questions were administered. While students... While our students' results remain strong, we did note a decrease in each of these measures compared to the 2020-2021 school year. And we must remember that those earlier results were shaped by the unique context of the pandemic at that time. Today's data may reflect a more realistic picture of student perspectives in a post-pandemic environment. Let's begin by acknowledging the unique impact of COVID-19 pandemic on the student character development during the 2020-2021 school year. At that time, public health measures like masking and physical distancing emphasised compliance and collective responsibility. Students were immersed in a real-life context where doing the right thing and protecting others. Students received relatively consistent messaging from media, Alberta Health Services, and individuals within their community around what ethical behaviour was. As a result, we may have seen elevated levels of student agreement during that period of time on themes such as doing what is right, thoughtful decision-making, critical reflection, compassion, and empathy. Fast forward to 2023-2024, and we have seen and experienced a shift. While these indicators remain strong, there has been a decline in agreement levels compared to the pandemic period. This may not be a sign of regression, but rather a reflection of changing context and environments the children are living in. A unified messaging around moral expectations during the pandemic has faded, and students are now navigating a more complexed and nuanced world with diverse and varied views and perspectives. At the same time, our student population has grown significantly, by nearly 10,000 students since the 2020-2021 school year. And with this growth has come greater cultural diversity and a broad range of lived experiences. These shifts may influence how students interpret and respond to survey questions, particularly around topics such as responding to authority, disagreement with others, and with self-expression. Cultural norms and past experiences may shape students' willingness to challenge policies or to speak up, which may help explain why the agreement with respecting... With respectfully challenging policy decisions measure remains relatively low at 64.2%. And yet, there are signs of meaningful progress. As Chief Superintendent Pittman shared, we saw an increase with student agreement with the statement "When I am upset with somebody, I try to see their point of view." So while this increase in cultural diversity of our student population may impact responses to questions around speaking up when they disagree with others, it may also be a part of what is supporting an increase in awareness and appreciation of other people's perspectives, particularly when they do not agree. At this time, I will turn things over to my colleague, Superintendent Mike Nelson. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Turner, Chair Bolger and trustees. One other area in the report we'd like to draw your attention to is in our summary measures associated with technological responsibility. This is one of the measures where, as Chief Superintendent Pittman shared, student agreement remains high at over 90%. And while high, we did note a decline of 4.2 percentage points since 2020-2021. As with other survey measures gathered during this period of pandemic protocols, it is reasonable to assume that the strong student agreement levels at this time may have been impacted by the focused attention on online security and the sharing of personal information, particularly during periods of times when individual students or entire classrooms were moving back and forth between in-person and online learning environments. When we look specifically at the results from the 2023-2024, we are encouraged to see students continuing... Excuse me. Continuing to report strong agreement with statements about online safety and the thoughtful sharing of information. Thanks in part to our ongoing work with digital citizenship plans, parent communication, and clear online safety protocols. However, we also recognise areas where continued focus is needed. Agreement with the statement "I treat people with the same respect online as I would face-to-face" saw the most significant decline to 83.2%, with particularly low responses among grade eight and nine students falling below 80%. This may reflect the rise of texting or social media platform-based communications, the influence of negative online role models, and the lack of immediate feedback in digital interactions. It also highlights the need for continued focus on middle school learners' identity. Developing resources that teach responsible decision-making, relationship skills, and self-management in digital environments is one example of how we are working to support students in the areas where students themselves are identifying they are wanting and requiring our support. In closing, our students are navigating a world that is more connected, more diverse, and more complex than ever before. Their character development is shaped not only by what we teach, but by the environments we create and the values we model. As we move forward, we will continue to support them with empathy, intentionality, and a shared commitment to helping every student develop in ways that contribute to positive and healthy relationships, personal fulfilment, and the common good. At this time, we welcome your questions.
Thank you. Trustees have received and reviewed the Chief Superintendent's report regarding the annual monitoring of results five character for the 2023-24 school year. It is now the board's responsibility to consider the report as evidence of reasonable organisational progress in this results area. I now invite any trustee who has questions about this monitoring report to offer them to the Chief Superintendent. I encourage you to limit your questions to those that will assist the board to make decisions... Make a decision regarding whether reasonable progress has been made to the ultimate achievement of this results policy. I remind trustees that the emphasis for monitoring results is not on compliance, but rather on reasonable progress. Any questions, trustees? Trustee Dennis?
Thank you so much. I realise when I sent my question, I had the page number incorrect, so I'm not really sure what page I'm on. And I can't access Apprio in any way through the app or the web version, so I don't have access to my reports this morning, so I'm going from memory here completely. But there is a statement in there, it says "I treat people with the same respect online as I would face-to-face", and we're recognising that there's a significant decline in the responses related to that. And so I also realise that in my comment here, I may be drawing some parallels that maybe are incorrect, so I might have some incorrect assumptions, so certainly happy to be corrected there if indeed I am wrong. But it would appear that there may be a struggle with the development of, you know, kind of, I guess, basic social skills, right? If you're treating somebody differently online as you would face-to-face. And I recognise certainly that we are all, ourselves as adults and certainly our students as well, are impacted by influencers, algorithms, and a culture that has shifted over time from, say, a telephone conversation to an email now to a text, and so our interactions have changed so much, just human to human. I'm wondering if we might see an improvement in this area now that the use of cellphones in schools has been, you know, significantly limited by decisions made by the Alberta Government. And also noticed under the professional learning section that was on page 30, there's a section there that says "Calling out, up, in, and on sessions are being developed", and so I don't know if I'm incorrectly drawing a line there, but I am curious if those sessions also might assist the adults in our schools to help our students in the development of helpful and positive social skills.
Thank you, through the chair. And so, online platforms, particularly social media, continue to contribute to social divisiveness by amplifying extreme content, promoting echo chambers, and facilitating the spread of misinformation. As shared in our opening remarks, that the last major year was close to the pandemic, where youth experienced increased access to online environments, as well as increased access to parent and education staff engagement in these online environments. Right now, as the times have shifted, we are not necessarily surprised to see this shift in results. As a result, respect online and digital citizenship are key areas of our focus. Anecdotally, we are hearing from our schools and families that the personal device policy and legislation is helping during the school day. However, school students are still connected and online outside of school, and we are still experiencing issues that occur outside of school online, carrying forward inside the school environment. So this needs to continue to be an area of focus for us. With respect to your question regarding the calling out, up, in, and on sessions, when adults learn the skills of calling out, calling up, calling in, and calling on, they can effectively recognise, identify, and address situations where students are experiencing harm due to discrimination or other inappropriate behaviours. These PL sessions are helped... Are targeted to ensure teachers engage in difficult conversations with students, fostering listening, understanding, and introducing new social-emotional learning behaviours that promote positive changes in interactions with students. And so all in an attempt to address that social-emotional learning and to ensure that students can be respectful both online and in person. Thank you.
Follow-up, trustee Dennis?
Thank you so much, and just mostly just a follow-up comment. I hope that our students all learn that just having conversations with the people next to you is just as fun as getting a text.
Thank you. Trustee Hack?
My questions along the same themes as trustee Dennis. So I heard in the opening remarks some explanation as to why this indicator has dropped by about 9% over the last two years since it was looked at. I don't have data before that, so I can't compare it to a time before the pandemic. So it was given as to why we may be doing... What we may be doing to support those who are acting poorly compared... Online compared face-to-face through raising self-esteem, that kind of thing. But what I'm wondering is, what are teachers or principals doing to ensure a safe space at school for students who are being bullied online by peers and classmates outside of that class time because students aren't allowed in class?
Through the chair. So trustee Hack, you're correct, in our opening remarks, we did talk about some of the factors that might be impacting this, and also would highlight even the change in the total number of students that we're surveying, and that we've had many new students, so some of those students might not have the experience and learning of digital citizenship that has been part of the ongoing learning experience of our students. As for how our school administrators support students in this type of work, we expect students to respect the rights and dignity of others and participate in promoting and fostering positive relationships. And this is taken up in classrooms or through school administrations as we talk about digital citizenship or making sure that they're aware of the positives and negatives of social media, et cetera. However, your question is really about what happens when things maybe aren't going well. So when things are not going well, we would have our administrators or our teachers focus on AR 6005 or Student Code of Conduct, or actually even looking at progressive discipline, which holds students accountable for their behaviour in support of a welcoming, caring, respectful, and safe learning environment that respects diversity and fosters a sense of belonging. Responses to inappropriate online conduct are contextual and specific and would of course be related to the development of the child, whether they're in grade three or four, or let's say in high school. So we would urge our administrators and teachers to be proactive, preventive, and restorative strategies that include supportive, corrective, and disciplinary actions, kind of from that range. So we would probably start with having conversation with students, talking about ways that they could improve their behaviour, all the way to potentially greater progressive discipline, depending on what this looks like. As also shared in the past, quite often, these events aren't necessarily happening in our school, but happen in the community by carryover to our school, so then we work with students about building positive relationships with their peers and others.
Trustee Bukadinovich?
Every time I walk into a CBE school or interact with CBE students, I see evidence that CBE students demonstrate good character and that they understand that their personal standards of conduct matter. One of the reasons why the vast majority of families in Calgary choose CBE schools is because our teachers nurture not just academic success, but also the character of our students. I'm curious about why and when the Board of Trustees landed on using survey and report card data to monitor whether the CBE is making reasonable progress towards helping students develop the attributes and standards of behaviour that demonstrate good character. I mean, of course, student surveys and report cards are both useful tools for supporting students at the individual level, but I'm wondering how these came to be used at the board level as system-wide monitoring tools? And I'm wondering whether the board ever used non-survey-based and non-report-card-based indicators in the past to monitor reasonable progress in moulding the strong character of our students? And I'm just musing about this, so this is not necessarily a question I'm asking staff to answer, but rather just sharing with my colleagues that these questions came to mind for me when I read this report.
Thanks, trustee Bukadinovich. Well, so as you know, the board creates policy, but also approves the indicators used to support reasonable progress. The indicators being used in this report were approved by a prior Board of Trustees, the report card data and survey data you're referring to. So I'm not sure of the history of when this decision was made, or if different indicators were used in the past, but this information should be publicly available on the CBE's website dating back 10 years, if you would like to do additional research on that. Any other questions from trustees? Any trustees who wish to bring forward a motion regarding exception or commendation should provide the motions to the Corporate Secretary and to all trustees by noon Thursday, May 22, 2025. This item will be placed on the May 27, 2025 agenda for the board's consideration. Next on our agenda is item 7.1, CBE Education Plan 2024-27, Year Two. Chief Superintendent Pittman, would you please introduce the report?
Thank you, Chair Bolger and trustees. I'm honoured to present Year Two of the Calgary Board of Education's Three-Year Education Plan for 2024 through 2027. And as you've heard in the title already, this indicates that it is a continuation, and that's an important part of the Alberta Education Assurance Framework, which sets out for school authorities that we set three, or four, or five-year plans that create continuity. And that indeed is what you see before you today, as we build upon past success while attending to the evolving needs of our students, staff, families, and the broader community. You'll recall that you are all involved in the development of the education plan that was presented to you last year, with an extensive consultation process involving staff, students, parents, and community partners, as well as industry. At that time, a number of themes emerged, including student and staff wellbeing, classroom complexity, academic achievement needs and desires, diversity and inclusion, and a recognition of the importance that we must prepare our students for future workplaces. These themes shape the three foundational goals of our education plan, being learning excellence, ensuring strong academic achievement in literacy and mathematics while equipping students with the skills necessary for lifelong learning and success. The second goal being wellbeing, supporting students and staff in creating a culture that fosters belonging, mental health, and positive relationships. And the third goal being truth and reconciliation, diversity and inclusion, strengthening equity, diversity, and inclusion while improving education outcomes for Indigenous students. Each goal is then supported by clear outcomes, actions, and also identified measures to ensure that we do indeed continuously improve, remain accountable, and respond to challenges. And while formal reporting on our progress towards these outcomes for Year One will be shared this fall in our annual education results report as per Alberta education timelines, we will also present incremental and ongoing data analysis, results reporting, engagements with staff and parents, and an extensive review of all current school development plans. These have provided the groundwork that have laid out these adjustments for Year Two. Now, much of what you see has not changed. The goals and outcomes of the plan were designed to provide security and stability in the face of increasing complexity and significant changes across our organisation. These goals remain the foundation of our work. Where we have made adjustments to the plan is in a number of actions and a few measures. These changes should be viewed as small adjustments that reflect refinement of our strategies while targeting areas for improvement identified through our analysis of data. They are not about chasing a net new, but rather honing in on what we have already identified as key actions within the plan. This work is parallel to the development of the 2025-26 CBE budget presented to you following this report. It should also be noted that this plan continues to align with Alberta Education's Ministerial Order on Student Learning, Funding, and Reporting Requirements, as well as Alberta Education's Business Plan. It provides assurance to the community of our commitment to high-quality education, student achievement, and wellbeing. And with that, I turn to superintendents Nelson and Turner to provide further detail on the refinements for Year Two, and look forward to the questions you will provide, no doubt.
Thank you, Chief Superintendent Pittman, Chair Bolger and trustees. In looking specifically at learning excellence, you will see that the outcomes remain consistent with the previous year. However, looking at the actions associated with each, you will note a shift in language moving from introducing or implementing actions towards sustaining focus and applying what we know towards improvement. Examples include sustained focus on individual program plans, the continuance of support for all learners, and the foundational frameworks of literacy and mathematics. With the third outcome, learning opportunities prepare students for future learning success. Actions have been adjusted to reflect our efforts to broaden our curricular experiences, offerings in a way that connect to potential future career pathways, and collaborating with industry and post-secondary partners in further developing these opportunities. These refinements in the plan are based on feedback from our industry partners and align with language in the Alberta Education Business Plan. Measures for these outcomes have remained consistent with only two small adjustments. The first is the inclusion of feedback from our post-secondary and industry partners as part of our cycle of improvement. And the second is the removal of the assessment of foundational reading skills or AFERS. While this measure was included in Year One of the education plan, Alberta Education has since mandated kindergarten literacy and numeracy screeners as part of the early years assessment, which already are included as a required local component measure. So this is not a loss or a measure... Excuse me, not a loss of a measure, but rather inclusion in existing one. At this time, I will turn to Superintendent Turner to share the refinements and the other goal domains.
Thank you, Chair Bolger, trustees. When we look at the refinements to the action and wellbeing, one of the primary changes has been to explicitly name social-emotional learning, or SEL, for students as part of our strategy. The explicit instruction of social-emotional learning competencies provides the foundation upon which students build resilience, focus, emotional regulation, and meaningful connection. We know that when SEL is integrated throughout the learning experience, it leads to greater academic achievement, stronger relationships, and an environment where both students and educators... educators thrive. For employees, actions from Year One remained unchanged as the work in this area continues. We have, however, added an additional action to continue the development of an employee well-being strategy and to begin to implement key actions and a corresponding adjustment to a measure for employee well-being data collection. The naming of this action demonstrates our commitment to staff well-being. The adjustment of the measure will be a more inclusive, more inclusive of other data sets beyond survey data to further target our strategic work and to measure our progress. With regard to truth and reconciliation, diversity and inclusion, refinements here focus on applying and embedding Indigenous education holistic lifelong learning framework principles and practices across the organization. The inclusion of structures and processes that support Indigenous learners alongside professional learning and resources, and the celebration of diversity of cultures and identities that are a strength of our community. And finally, we have refined actions in the third outcome associated with our working and learning environment. The adjustment moves us beyond simply defining our commitment to truth and reconciliation, anti-racism, equity, diversity, and inclusion, and shifts to demonstrating that through our commitment through actions. This resulted in a more targeted, single action that is inclusive of the two previously separate components. Thank you, and at this time, we welcome your questions.
Trustees, any questions or comments on the report? Trustee Close?
Thank you, Chair Bolger. And I do appreciate the opening comments, and there's some questions that I will not be asking. But I think, like, it's interesting for me to have read the education plan and have so many questions, because I know it drives our development of the budget. And so there are certain questions that came to mind that I just want to revisit, I suppose, in some ways. On learning, under learning excellence, how does CBE use the Alberta Education Early Years Literacy and Numeracy Assessments to consistently apply continuums of support? And are there other factors that contribute to evidence-based targeted literacy and math interventions? So from a budget perspective, how will we prioritize funds to ensure consistent support?
Through the chair. The CBE uses the Alberta Education Early Years Literacy and Numeracy Assessments as a key tool to identify students in kindergarten through grade three who require additional supports. And these assessments provide the foundation for consistent application of CBE's literacy and mathematics framework, which guide intervention planning across the schools. By working from a shared and research-based understanding of effective instruction and assessment, CBE ensures a system-wide approach to support. From a budget perspective, Alberta Education's move to an adjusted enrollment method for the 2025-2026 introduces a stable and predictable funding model. This allows CBE to strategically and proactively prioritize funds to support the highest need learners across the system. And this coordinated system plan is being finalized to ensure that funding is directed where it will have the greatest impact, strengthening consistent and effective literacy and numeracy support in every school for our most vulnerable learners.
Trustee Bukadinovich?
I'm aware that we have a higher proportion of English-language learners arriving in the high school years than we did in the past, and I'm concerned about how students who are new to Alberta can meet all of the requirements of a high school diploma within a short three-year window while also trying to learn English. And then on page nine of 12 of this report, I read that one of our key actions is to use, refine, and equitably allocate comprehensive supports, resources, and programs to help meet the diverse needs of students, including EAL learners. So my question is, how are we addressing the needs of EAL students who could use a fourth or fifth year of high school in order to successfully graduate from high school?
Through the chair. In regards to your question around supporting EAL students, you are correct that we have outlined in previous board meetings that with an increase in EAL students, and more specifically, some of our EAL learners arriving later in their education journey, our high schools are trying to program for students at the same time balancing limited space. So our high schools are supporting students by offering an extra year of instruction and utilizing other more flexible options such as Shonook Learning Services, Discovering Choices, and CBE Learn. Next year, we're actually piloting a targeted class at Discovering Choices bonus that will serve students who are close to their high school credit count, however they need social studies and English Language Arts 30-level courses to graduate. We anticipate 30 to 35 students to be in this pilot cohort. So with limited resources, we're trying to be as creative as possible to support all of our learners, and specifically, this targeted group as outlined in our education plan.
Go ahead, Trustee Bukadinovich.
Thank you. That's wonderful to hear, and an amazing example of innovation by the Calgary Board of Education. Thank you, Chief Superintendent Pittman, and thank you to your staff. My next question again relates to page nine of 12, where I read that, again, read that one of our key actions is to use, refine, and equitably allocate comprehensive supports, resources, and programs to help meet the diverse needs of students with various special needs. So my question is that if a student is facing housing insecurity or food insecurity, are there staff members at the CBE whose job description includes helping students navigate those challenges? Or do we work with external agency partners for this type of support? Or are there different people responsible at different school sites, perhaps different for an elementary school versus for a Discovering Choices outreach high school? So just looking for some help understanding how we help students who are navigating housing insecurity and food insecurity.
Through the chair. Prior to handing it over to Superintendent Turner, I do just want to highlight that on page nine of 12, we have situated key outcomes as examples on that page. But when you would go to the previous pages, that's where you would see the key actions. So I just want to make sure that there's a clarification that those key outcomes are used as an example, where we explain the logic model, and then the key actions that we're prioritizing as a system are listed in the actual education plan itself, just for context, because I don't want those to be misread. And go ahead, Superintendent Turner.
Thank you. Through the chair. So with respect to your comments specifically for students facing housing insecurity or food insecurity, it would be very dependent on the age of the student. And so in most cases, we partner with external social agencies to support students and their families who are looking for stability in housing or accessing food. And to navigate these supports, Calgary Board of Education has staff members such as school family liaison counselors, a variety of other support staff who work centrally and school-based to reach out with schools and families to ensure that they understand the pathway to, through, and from services in our community as part of our continuum of supports and services. Thank you.
Trustee Bukadinovich?
How do we support the learning experiences of deaf and hard-of-hearing students? So how do we ensure that students living with deafness can understand lessons, participate fully, and engage with their peers?
Thank you. Through the chair. We support the learning experience of students who are deaf and hard-of-hearing through the provision of a continuum of supports and services, a variety of specialized technologies, and specialized personnel. Most of our students are programmed for in-community schools with additional supports as needed, and some of those supports could include FM systems, interpreter support, or strategist support. Schools are also able to consult with audiology and speech and language pathologists. The Calgary Board of Education has two congregated settings within CBE specifically for deaf-and-hard-of-hearing students. Jenny Elliott School provides deaf-and-hard-of-hearing congregated setting for students in grade one through six, and Queen Elizabeth High School provides a congregated setting for students grade seven through 12. In these programs, dedicated classes offer unique educational environments, including English-language instruction, communication supports and services, curriculum adaptations, instructional accommodations, integration opportunities, and learning technologies. For students where their needs are met across in their community schools, we also use instructional support strategies that include either primarily oral direction and communication or bilingual approaches. And each of those approaches are very much dependent on the child and the family and their preferences around how to best meet their learning needs. And so all of those opportunities are available to support our deaf-and-hard-of-hearing students. Thank you.
My next question, I'm wondering, what is the difference between some of these positions I'm hearing about? So instructional support workers, behavioral support workers, school and family liaison workers, educational assistants? And I'm asking this at a high level, so not a detailed difference, but kind of in the layman's terms, what is the main difference in terms of maybe their qualifications, job descriptions, the on-job training they receive? And how does the CBE determine the relative proportion of staff members hired for each of these types of in-class support roles?
Through the chair. Thank you. And so this Calgary Board of Education explores and understands staff members hired in these roles, so instructional support workers, behavior support workers, education assistants, based on the specific needs of the students and the students within the school community, and the kinds of outcomes and desires that these students are working towards, rather than a relative proportion. So principals make these decisions based on the changing programming needs and context within their school, in consultation at times with their education director or the Department of Inclusive Education to ensure that there is a right fit between these roles and the assessed area of need of the students. And so at a very high level, the three examples that you have provided, instructional support worker, behavior support worker, and education assistant, each can provide in a variety of different ways support for academic, social, emotional, or behavioral supports. Instructional support workers are more aligned with reconnecting and engaging with school community in the world of work. Behavior support worker, as it's built into that title, is more along the lines of social, emotional, and mental health needs. And education assistants provide a broader range of academic learning or vocational supports, as well as functional academics in assessing and supporting personal care needs. And so all of those positions are vital within our organization to meet the needs of the students, but the assignment of those positions is truly based on the needs of an individual student and the principals making those decisions to be able to best support that student in that school-community context. Thank you.
Through the chair. If I would also add to Superintendent Turner's comprehensive overview of positions and allocations, it's important that every decision is highlighted in the context of constrained resources and prioritization. So while the student needs, we recognize, define the way in which we maximize that. It is in that context that decisions are made. And I think that's an important element to highlight and one that certainly we'll discuss further in the context of our CBE budget.
Thank you. Follow-up, Trustee Bukadinovich?
I mean, that is indeed the context that guides everything, that's for sure. Just to follow up on that last piece, so in trying to determine how budget is allocated between certificated teachers and non-certificated support staff, is this always a decision made at the school level by principals? Or when it comes to our specialized classes or our unique setting schools, to what extent are these decisions made centrally?
So a great deal of these decisions are based at the school level. The second part of your question, you were asking around specialized classes. Centrally, when we assign a specialized class at a school, we also assign the teacher component or the non-certified staff. But as highlighted in Superintendent Turner's last answer, the overall RAM budget, and look at Superintendent Gruny to add in if needed, is year over year, we have an understanding. But it's really about harmony between our collective agreements and the context of the school. So all students need to receive instruction from a teacher. So within the resource allocation model, a significant amount of the funds go to certified staff. But each school also needs non-certified staff to run the office and the other positions as needed, based on the school funding and context. And so if we think about that in an example is, if you think of the context of the school, whether a number of students that have a special education code need extra support, are EAL, that will determine the hiring of EA's behavior support workers, ELL assistants, and even lunchroom supervisors will be dependent on the number of students that stay for lunchroom and the determination of that split between certified and non-certified staff.
Thank you. Trustee Close?
Thank you. Back to, under learning excellence and under the key outcome of learning opportunities prepare students for future learning and success, I do understand that you added an additional local measure as a small adjustment around the post-secondary and industry partner feedback. But with the government focus on career pathways and obviously our longstanding focus in this area, is this going to be a challenge or is it an adjustment? So how will we be able to respond to evolving industry demands through dual credit and exploratory pathway opportunities?
Through the chair. Apologize for the hum. I think it's going to be a little bit of both. Trustee Close? So we do have very strong partnerships with post-secondary and our community partners, and we regularly review industry trends and demands with them. And so we continually do adjust our dual credit and exploratory offerings to meet those shifts that we're seeing in industry. And we will continue to offer the best programs we can within our resources. However, the limiting factor to growth within these areas is sustainable and predictable funding. So there are currently dual credit startup and enhancement grants through Alberta Education. However, sustaining these dual credit opportunities after grants run out is challenging. There's also no specific funding tied to exploratory programming, which is an essential component of our system offerings, particularly in our high schools. As our high schools continue to grow in their population, industry involvement is a target for us as we look to donors and sponsors through Education Matters and program partners that may be able to support future programming to sustain the advancement we have made. We have had great, excuse me, we've made great strides with our partners that are helping support those programs. And I know you've been to events recently that kind of echo that. So it's a real balance.
Trustee Close?
Thank you. And maybe moving along the same lines as far as community funding and support, under well-being, what came to mind for me is, will we be looking for enhanced community funding under partnerships to support the continued implementation of the student well-being framework? The symposiums have been fantastic, obviously, just wondering if it's sustainable.
Thank you. Through the chair. And so we are working, again, very closely with Education Matters to secure donors and sponsors within a pillar called Supporting Healthy Learners Funding Pillar. And this funding pillar supports schools in addressing the holistic health needs of our students, so they're able to fully engage in learning and participate in classroom activities. We're also working and continually to work with community organizations to form new partnerships or to strengthen existing partnerships that support and enhance student well-being through their programs, services, or resources. Some examples of those community partnerships include our work with Apple Schools, Alberta Health Services, EverActive, as well as Health Promoting Schools Collaborative, where school divisions can come together and support each other in understanding best practices and approaches for supporting healthy learners. Thank you.
Trustee Close?
Thank you again. And my last question on Year Two of our exciting education plan is, again, under well-being, and how does CBE work with our local union professional groups to develop an employee well-being strategy?
Through the chair. This is very important work, and work that- Through the chair, this is very important work and work that has been ongoing over the course of this year, but certainly has been impacted over the events of the school year. And we have been working collaboratively through a range of groups, but prior to naming them, I do want to highlight that in preparation for that, we are gathering quantitative data from our Employee Family Assistance Program, Sun Life, ASABP, WCB, and other external providers. So we're gathering all of that data. And this process also includes qualitative consultation then with union groups through multiple employee wellbeing-related committees and initiatives. So there are a number of working committees and groups that have been involved historically and will continue to be important to be involved as we move forward. They provide valuable insight to establishing this overall strategy. And they include and note that this is not a comprehensive list, but these are ones that are especially reflected through our collective agreements and are important parts of how we work together. First is our Health and Wellness Committee, and that includes all union groups, and they meet at least four times per year. Then we also have the ATA Sick Leaves Committee, which includes ATA members and school authority measures members, and they also meet four times a year. We also have our ATA Working Conditions Committee, and that includes ATA members and school authority members, meeting again four times per year. And then our Joint Work Site Health and Safety Committee, which includes all union groups, meeting a minimum of four times a year. And having been part of some, not all of these committees directly, I can attest to the importance of the identified areas of concern of our unions, the importance of sharing our data and how that will further inform the way we move forward, not only in a culture of wellbeing, but concrete actions where we can collectively have impact. And this is certainly an important time period right now, when we have incredible growth to ensure that we're fulfilling this particular outcome.
Trustees, any other questions or comments on this report? All right, seeing none, this item will be placed on the May 27, 2025 agenda for the board's consideration. Our next item of business is the budget report for the 2025-26 school year. Chief Superintendent Pittman, would you please introduce the report?
Well, as an extension of our education plan and an important strategic document, the 2025-26 CBE budget is rooted in our mission values and the board of trustees' priorities for achievement, equity, and wellbeing. The budget is developed in concert with the CBE education plan, and it supports and enables the achievement of the goals that we've just discussed. As you contemplate the budget report for 2025-26, I want to confirm that it is indeed consistent with the major assumptions presented to you earlier in the 2025-26 Budget Assumptions Report. The CBE's budget for this upcoming school year totals $1.67 billion and is focused on supporting the success of an anticipated 146,000-plus students. This budget also funds the 16,000 people who work tirelessly, day in and day out, to ensure that all students have an equal opportunity to succeed. We appreciate that the overall provincial budget for public education has increased from last year, and for the CBE, that means an additional $55 million. That said, our budget reality continues to be impacted by increasing enrollment, growing student complexity, the cumulative and ongoing year-over-year impact of inflation and finite learning spaces. These were the assumptions considered in the Budget Assumptions Report presented to you on April 8, and they are reflected again in today's budget. To ensure that Budget 2025-26 enables student success across the system, we've prioritized the highest-impact activities while acting with prudence to ensure our operations align with and within available funding. Every CBE budget is focused on one goal: to maximize dollars to the classroom to support teaching and learning and the success of students. I'll now turn it over to Superintendent Grundy to provide details of the 2025-26 budget.
Thank you, Chief Pittman, and to trustees through the chair. Presented for your information and consideration today is the CBE's budget for the 2025-26 school year, which will commence in September of 2025. The presentation of the CBE's budget is a requirement set out in Operational Expectation V: Financial Planning. Also, Alberta Education through the Education Act requires all Alberta school jurisdictions to submit a balanced budget to the Minister of Education no later than May 31 of each year. Trustees, the budget report before you today meets those requirements. In building the budget, the CBE is guided by its values: students come first, learning is our central purpose, and public education serves the common good. Also, the CBE is informed by one overarching objective, that is to maximize to the greatest extent possible the resources directed towards teaching and learning in the classroom. In developing the budget, the CBE is further informed by several considerations. Specifically, and the chief superintendent touched on some of these, continued high rates of enrollment, more than 20,000 students over four years. Continued increases in the number of students with complex learning needs and their level of complexity, projected to be more than 26,000 students. Continued increases in the number of students learning English as an additional language, currently projected to be more than 44,000 students for 2025-26. An increasing number of CBE schools that are at or above full utilization. We are expecting that approximately three-quarters of our schools will be in that category. Ongoing collective bargaining that is directed by the Provincial Bargaining and Compensation Office, including bargaining with the Alberta Teachers Association. Student transportation funding that is reduced in the face of increased ridership and the government's mandate that grows the eligibility zone for student transportation. The difficult-to-anticipate impact of global trade tariffs, inflation, and the related impact on the value of the Canadian dollar. To put that in perspective, 23% of the CBE's spending is on goods and services. The amount of post-September 30 enrollment growth that does not directly attract additional Alberta education funding. And finally, the need to strengthen the CBE's financial reserves to increase its ability to address unanticipated cost pressures. While that may seem like a daunting list of considerations, the CBE's approach to addressing these considerations can be described in two words: prioritization and prudence. Prioritization means that the total amount of funding directed towards teaching and learning in the classroom will rise to slightly more than $1,777 million. That is a historic amount of funding that was deployed to our schools in April. Prudence sees the CBE setting aside one-half of 1% of total Alberta education funding, or approximately $8 million, to increase the CBE's financial flexibility to respond to the unknown or the unanticipated. Prioritization means an increase in the number of system classes, given the increasing levels of students with complexity and the needs for specialized programming. Prudence means that the CBE is increasing student transportation fees by $10 per month and noon supervision fees by $4.50 per month. This to ensure that these programs remain financially viable and do not draw upon teaching and learning resources. Prioritization means making targeted investments in support services, such as human resources and facilities and environmental services, among others, to ensure our growing system has access to the central services they need so that they can focus on teaching and learning. Prudence means taking reasonable steps to ensure that any potential collective agreements are funded, consistent with government's direction and anticipated settlements. Trustees, as the chief superintendent noted, the CBE's 2025-26 budget will be $1.67 billion, and this is carefully crafted to support the success of the anticipated 146,000 students. To the extent that it is operationally prudent, funding received in the year is deployed to support the teaching and learning of students in the system for that same year. Before I turn to your questions, I would like to provide some additional context for those places in the budget report where we compare the 2025-26 budget to the 2024-25 budget. Budget 2024-25 was built on the assumption that total enrollment would exceed 147,000 students. Actual enrollment for 2024-25 was slightly, or is slightly, less than 143,000 students. While this may seem like a big miss in terms of the forecast's accuracy, remember that the forecast is generated in March or April for a school year that does not begin until September. Realistically, that means we can always expect some level of variance between forecasts and actual results. Keeping those numbers in mind, enrollment for the 2025-26 is forecast to be slightly more than 146,000 students. Because actual current-year enrollment is below the budgeted enrollment for 24-25, comparisons between the current-year budget and the budget we're discussing today should be considered with caution. For example, on page 14 of 34, the number of staff for schools and areas shows an increase of only 24. This change is a significant understatement, as the 24-25 staffing level was based on 147,000 students, not the actual number of 143,000 students. So once we adjusted staffing levels to 143, the difference between the current year and next year will obviously be higher. This means that, based on the information we currently have available to us, we would expect that the actual increase in student, or sorry, school and area staffing will be closer to 150 additional FTE, not the 24 that compares budget to budget. Likewise, budget-to-budget comparisons of funding are similarly smaller. Because the 24-25 budget initially was higher, that means that the actual gap between actual funding and budget for 25-26 will be larger than is reflected in the report. So with that clarification, I would be happy to take your questions at this time.
Trustee Vukadovitch.
Thank you. I certainly appreciate the clarity of that explanation about the budget-to-budget. I thought that was very clear. And yeah, the bottom line is we're seeing those numbers of students go up every year by record-breaking levels. I see that, when I read this budget, I see that the CBE's funding from the provincial government is increasing by $55 million, and it increases better than flat funding or a decrease in funding. But our board of trustees had been advocating for a $180 million increase at last year's enrollment numbers. That was at last year's enrollment numbers. And we expect to welcome an additional 3,700 students for the 2025-26 school year. So basically, what I am seeing is that the $55 million increase will help us to address the cost pressures of our growing enrollment, but it will not move the needle on our per-student funding. Per-student funding has essentially remained flat since 2019, yet in this period, we've seen significant inflation. And when the cost of everything goes up, but the per-student funding for public education from the provincial government stays flat, it impacts us in three ways. First, it makes me worry about what class sizes will look like in Alberta in the 2025-26 school year. Secondly, it makes me worry about how we'll be constrained in our ability to support students with complex needs. And thirdly, I'm concerned that yet another budget with flat per-student funding means that we at the CBE will once again be unable to afford to open additional programs of choice. I know that the CBE has tens of thousands of students waiting for a spot in a community school. But we also have significant numbers of students waiting for the CBE to open additional alternative programs, especially when it comes to our most popular programs, such as French immersion, traditional learning centers, and our science schools. I'm also worried about this from a taxpayer perspective, because I know that Alberta's public schools are able to provide programs of choice on a far more economical and cost-effective basis than charter schools or independent schools, because public schools have relatively lower administrative overhead, and because only public schools are accountable to taxpayers for the utilization rates of our schools. Taxpayers get a way better deal when new programs of choice are opened through Alberta's public school boards. So my questions are, when was the last time the CBE was able to open a new alternative program? What school year was that in? And is our flat per-student funding one of the barriers to our ability to even consider opening another alternative program at this time?
Through the chair, prior to having Superintendent Breton respond to the very specific questions on the last time and dates, I would highlight that in Budget 2024-25, on page 9 of 34, we report that our per-student funding with the calculation was $8,861, and this year it has increased, while not at the same rate as inflation, and that chart, I believe, is fairly self-explanatory in terms of the difference impacted by inflation, but did indeed rise to $9,311. When we look at our ability to manage, as well as CFO's, our opening comments around our, three-quarters of our schools are fully utilized. Separate and apart from any funding allocations, we have a capital issue that we need to continue to address and have seen responses from government around the School Construction Accelerator Program to do so. So I appreciate that where you're going, trustee Vukadovitch, is relative to the efficiency of taxpayer dollars linked to alternative program development. And certainly, CBE has committed to choice in our schools in alternative programs. We have not opened net new alternative programs in quite some time. I'll turn it to Superintendent Breton to provide that information. But overall, this budget really focuses to maximize our existing dollars, and that is administration's continued priority throughout every single step of its development. So with that, I'll ask Superintendent Breton to respond.
Through the chair. So the last time we saw an alternative program expansion would have been the 2019-2020 school year, and that was specific to the French immersion program expansion that occurred in the Northwest. Last time we opened a brand-new alternative program would have been 2011, and that would have been specific to the All Boys Program that was created in that year. And really, during these times that we're living through record enrollment, space and resources are the two comments that are identified within the Education Act as to essentially allowing school jurisdictions to create alternative programming. Right now, it's all about space, and that is the biggest factor preventing us from creating any new alternative programs at this time.
Through the chair, if I may just make one final comment on per-student funding. So the chief superintendent referenced the graph that we've included in the budget report on page 9 of 34, and there is indeed an increase in the per-student funding. The majority of that, however, is as a direct result of ongoing and recently concluded labor negotiations, whereby obviously the cost of labor for the CBE is going up, consistent with those settlements, and therefore we need to spend more to keep the same level of staffing. So we would expect the per-student amount to go up to accommodate that higher cost of labor.
Thank you for that. Trustee Dennis, over to you.
Thank you, Chair. So we know that recently there have been some adjustments to approvals regarding Jordan's principal funding, and so just wondering how the CBE might be impacted and whether or not we're needing to make any adjustments with the changes that are coming from, through Jordan's principal funding from the federal government.
Through the chair. We do not anticipate any adjustments to be required as a result of the changes to Jordan's principal funding provided by the federal government. So Jordan's principal was created to make sure that First Nations children have equal access to essential government-funded products, services, and supports they need, regardless of where they live in Canada. And although there is a continued commitment by the federal government for the 25-26 school year, there has been recent announced changes that each request will be considered on a case-by-case basis. And so that results in existing or previously approved requests are not necessarily guaranteed to continue, and they will be considered as a new funding request. So in terms of CBE practices, new requirements align with our past practices. We ensure that we wait for written approval of a request before committing funds towards a particular request. And we know that all of our Indigenous and First Nations students will continue to receive the high-quality amount of support and services available with the continuum of supports and services here in CBE.
Thank you. Trustee Hack.
So I'm trying to understand the budget as a whole. So I've got some, I guess, overall questions. So I'm looking at this year, so this year compared to last year. So last year, CBE saw a budget of $1.62 billion. This year, we're seeing $1.67 billion. Trying to make sure my numbers are all correct, so please correct me if that's wrong. If so, if those are correct, what revenue is expected to decrease as this is actually only a $50 million increase to the budget? But administration has noted that we're receiving an extra $55 million from the province this year.
Through the chair. So admittedly, it gets complicated. So the CBE produces one budget a year. So for the current school year, that budget was created in March, April, and presented to the board in May. And that's our budget for the current school year. As I indicated in my introductory comments, that budget was predicated on 147,000 students. Therefore, all of the revenue categories and all of the, I shouldn't probably say all, many or most of the revenue categories and many or most of the expense categories would have reflected 147,000 students. The actual number of students that we're experiencing in this current year is 143,000. I think you're well aware that some of the provincial funding then has to be returned if you don't have the enrollment. But also, the expenditures associated with a lower number of students would be lower. But we don't produce a new budget based on 143,000. So when we're comparing last year's budget to this budget today, we have to consider that. What I would point you to is Appendix 1 of the budget report, where we show the Alberta education funding profile. And there you'll see that for the budget that we're talking about, government is projecting to send us $1.442 billion. And the prior-year amount that they've calculated is that $1.386 billion. So that accounts for the $55 million difference. The $1.386 billion number that the government references would reflect an adjustment to actual enrollment. So hopefully, that helps.
Trustee Dennis and trustee Bukidinovich, after that.
Thank you so much. Just overall, how did the program evaluation framework inform this budget?
Through the chair. Program evaluation explicitly considers effectiveness, efficiency, and economy of a given program. These principles are also regularly applied by staff in the ongoing supervision and evaluation of practices offered by Calgary Board of Education. By systematically analyzing programs in terms of these effectiveness, the resources they require, the costs, or the economy, program evaluation provides the evidence needed to demonstrate to public that resources are being used responsibly to achieve the best possible educational outcomes for children. And so staff regularly review programs offered with these principles. And some examples that contributed to this budget include the relocation of home education Chinook learning services to maximize learning spaces and facility utilization rates to ensure economic use of our physical facilities. Another example is the reallocation of human resources within the addition of dedicated services for students with English as additional language and students with complex learning needs, the students with mental health needs to enhance efficiency and effectiveness of student programming. And the final example, program evaluation recommendation and the subsequent closure of the All Boys school contributed to the formulation of this budget as closing this program allowed for a more equitable distribution of Calgary Board of Education funds, resources, and maximized facility use to ensure student success across our system. Thank you.
Trustee Bukidinovich.
On page 6 of 134, I read that 73% of CBE's schools are full or overcapacity based on Alberta Education's criteria. And we heard that statistic repeated earlier by superintendents. But Alberta Education's formula for calculating the capacity of public schools is based on square footage and includes space such as gym stages, hallways, staff rooms, libraries, and more. As a result, there are public schools in this province that would need 40 kids per classroom in kindergarten to achieve 100% utilization. So when I see a statistic in our budget document that tells me 73% of our schools are full using Alberta Education's calculation, I know that in reality, a much greater percentage of our schools would be considered full if we were calculating utilization based on the number of students per classroom in a school rather than on the basis of square footage. What bothers me too is that not only is Alberta Education's base calculation-
Point of order, please. Point of information. Deal with this how you will, Chair Bolter, but for me, my understanding of today is to ask questions. I know we all want to debate the budget and what we're facing, but I'm wondering if that is reserved for May 27th? Yeah, that point of order is well taken. So yeah, perhaps save that for debate. Trustee Bukidinovich, and if you have a question for the administration.
So my question is, in addition to reporting on our system utilization rate using Alberta Education's square footage-based formula, does the CBE also seek to understand the fullness of our schools using a formula that is not based on square footage, that is more straightforward and better captures how very well utilized our schools are?
Through the chair. And so, as you've accurately reflected, Alberta Education has a formula. It is used to provide them with information on, I guess, provide them a certain degree of understanding of just how full schools are across the province in a very generic fashion. From a Calgary Board of Education perspective, that is a starting point for us. But that's all it is in a sense, because then after that, it's not something I would say that can be tackled by a formula again. A formula speaks to very general issues. Whereas here, we're looking at the very unique circumstances of each school that you are highlighting, trustee Bukidinovich. So whether it's the unique physical layout of that school, whether it's the fact that it might be a dual-track school with an alternative program and a regular program, it might be something to do with the grade configuration of that school, or maybe the population it serves. All of those are factors that would influence the feeling of fullness of a school. And so, again, whereas the Alberta Education formula might give us a starting point, after that, it becomes a conversation between the planning team and the educators to confirm what may or may not be required in a school, notwithstanding what the formulas are telling us.
Thank you. Trustee Hack, and then trustee Dennis.
Speaking of full and overflowing schools, looking at page 6 of 34, it was referenced that CBE has or will receive 55 modulators over two years. Can you remind me what we had asked for in our 2023-24 school year submission as well as the 2024-25 school year submission? And then just wondering if the number of 55 new, does that include any of the ones that trustees had approved for in budget to have moved from one school to a school of greatest need?
Through the chair. So the submission that was made in October of 2023 for the 24-25 school year was for 68 modulators and 12 relocations. So 68 new modulators and 12 relocations. And then the submission that was brought to you last October, that was for a total of 64 new modulators. So those are the figures in terms of what was new. The 55 really speaks to only new modulators, not relocations. And so here, we're talking about 47 plus eight essentially in terms of approvals.
Trustee Dennis.
Thank you so much. So in the interest of some of our youngest learners, CBE has long offered full-day kindergarten programs, even though we are only funded for half-day programs. And so, as we continue to have increased enrollment and increased complexity and more demands on our limited dollars, I'm wondering if we're anticipating many or any changes to our full-day kindergarten programs for the 25-26 school year just in terms of increasing, decreasing, maintaining, or changing existing sites for those programs?
Thank you. Through the chair. For the 25-26 school year, CBE will maintain the current number of full-day kindergarten programs as well as the current locations that were offered in the current year. Thank you.
Trustee Hack.
Sorry, I wasn't quick enough with the hand. I do have a follow-up question for my last one. So putting those numbers together, I'm seeing we had asked for 132 new modulators, and we've received approval from provincial government for 55. So less than one year's ask. Is that correct, my math?
Through the chair, that math would be accurate. 68 plus the 64 that were requested and the 55 total that were approved.
Trustee Dennis.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up to my previous question, and then I'll just throw my next question in there. So how many full-day kindergarten programs are we offering for next school year? And then just with that number. And then moving on to my next item, I guess, is what role do cultural diversity advisors play in the CBE? And how does that investment contribute to overall academic success for our students?
Through the chair. Thank you. So the current school year, and this will continue to the next school year, there are 14 sites in CBE that are operating full day K, and that is reflective of 26 classes. And so most of the sites have two classes, with the exception, one has one and one has three. Other than that, the majority of those sites have two classes per site. With respect to the cultural diversity advisors, what role do they play? And what does this investment contribute to overall academic success? The Diversity and Learning Support Advisor provides culturally and linguistically tailored services to students, staff, and their families. Through this collaboration between home and school, they leverage a student's strength and background experiences to foster a more culturally inclusive learning environment, which contributes to academic success in the school. Parent and school partnership is vitally important, and this role provides support for that relationship to grow. Thank you.
Go ahead, trustee Dennis.
Thank you so much. I guess a follow-up on that. So are cultural diversity advisors centrally located that then, or in our area offices that then provide support to schools? Or do certain schools have their own?
Through the chair, they're centrally located.
Trustees, any other questions or comments? Trustee Close. Well, I think as a follow-up to trustee Dennis's, I'd like to ask the question, and it came to mind as I was reading the budget, is if you could provide us with more information on the school support model and what assumptions exist when we are creating the budget?
In terms of the context of the school support model, which was reestablished back in 2019, the fundamental assumptions in terms of the resource allocation around it, and when I say school support model, I want to clarify that we're talking about two superintendents of school improvement, the education director team, the area structures that includes our system principles, includes strategists directly working with inclusive education, as well as the structures that are centrally designed. And one of the pieces that is the most significant shift is a clear connection between all of those roles, and I'll actually go back to the education plan, in support of the overall goals and outcomes, as well as the results that are reported back to the Board of Trustees. Also, the other assumption is that leadership that is collaborative and uses data means that we will be responsive to individual schools. So when asked about how we allocate resources or how we redefine priorities or actions, you heard me in my opening comments for the education plan talk about a close review of every school development plan. Superintendent Grundy referenced prioritization and prudence. Every one of those school development plans is expected to be reflective of the top needs for a school to improve targeted areas for students. The school support model then reflects back of how have we allocated resources to meet those needs? Where are we making adjustments? When we report in OE3 around area learning team referrals, that particular data set also informs where it is we apply additional resources. All of those pieces through the school support model are fundamental assumptions that when we have leadership and positional structures that allow us to analyze data and make adjustments across prioritized areas, and those priorities are set by the Board of Trustees as well as by Alberta Education, we then seek to meet those particular needs. And the model is predicated on the closest supports as possible to each school based on the trends and patterns of those areas. So while they are common, they are responsive to differences between our areas as well. And the connection across the work of education directors alongside service unit directors is an important part because the school support model is not separate and distinct from the work of HR, from the work of facilities and environmental services, from the work of communications, et cetera. So I think it is, I really appreciated actually receiving that question because it highlights that while we may not have enough support, we have the structure and process to adjust and prioritize support in a way that we have not previously or historically had. Thank you.
Trustee May, go ahead.
Thank you. Just a general question regarding the increased student and classroom complexity. So I'm wondering, will we be adding any new classes this coming school year? And how many specialized classes do we now have within our system?
Thank you. Through the chair. Annual strategic resource allocation improvement process is essential to ensure the provision of supports and services effectively, efficiently, and economically to address the needs that are identified, respond to emerging needs, also remain fiscally responsible. In March 7, 2025, the Calgary Board of Education had 20,810 students with an identified special education code requiring additional supports and services. And so as a result of this increased need, 11 additional specialized classes have been planned for the upcoming school year, or roughly an additional 132 additional seats, bringing the total number of spaces to just over 3,600 spaces in specialized support classes. Additionally, we have added and increased additional dedicated education assistance support staff allocation to 40 specialized classes to ensure equitable allocation of support staff resources allocated to these supports and to these students and their learning needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Hack, and then trustee Dennis.
Thank you. Page 18 of 36, I see that we have set aside $36.5 million for board-funded capital to address projects. Does administration expect this to accurately cover the costs for next year? I'm looking to ensure that we, the board, are doing our due diligence related to this line item as an accurate reflection of what the CBE plans on spending. Over the last couple of years, I've witnessed that when we overspend here, the board is forced to retroactively pull from reserves. I know that this reserves, that it's- forced to retroactively pull from reserves. I know that this reserves, that it's pulled from, is also supposed to be covering the costs of opening new schools. We know that we have over a dozen coming up in the next few years. I just want to make sure that that stays healthy enough to cover the costs of opening those new schools.
Through the Chair, and it's nice when we're talking about the budget that the CFO can finally answer a question. I tease.
He's feeling left out.
Yeah. So, yes, to the direct question, is the allocation to board-funded capital adequate for purposes for the 25-26 school year? We've just been through an internal process that will be coming to the superintendent's team to prioritize and fund the highest priority capital projects for the 25-26 school year. I would expect that, it's no surprise to trustees, that like many areas of our budget, there's always pressures. If we had additional dollars, there's always that next thing that we could take on. But for 25-26, I think we're in a pretty decent place. Significant projects would include things like the technology evergreening program that makes sure that the technology that's in our classrooms remains fresh, accessible, reliable, and secure. That project is funded. There are projects to address the security of our assets, primarily our facilities, to make sure that they are well-protected from people who may wish to do them harm. So, there's dollars to support that, and the list goes on, including capital investment in the equipment that's necessary for colleagues in facilities and environmental services to provide their services out to the schools. With regard to your comment about accessing capital reserves, perhaps a little bit of a clarification. So, for this year, the one we're currently in, the budget included an amount, approximately the same amount as what we're approving for next year, for board-funded capital. As we sit here in May, however, I have no way of knowing how when we get to the end of August, our year-end, whether all of those projects that were approved for this year will have concluded as planned. There may be some things that occur, it might take longer to procure, there might be higher costs, there might be lower costs. So, what happens when we get to year-end is if projects need to continue into the coming year, we carry forward budget from what you approved this year into next year. Those dollars, just by the mechanisms provided to us by Alberta Education, run through capital reserves, but they're not, strictly speaking, the CBE's capital reserve, they're a carry-forward amount. And then, when we get to next year, I have no doubt we'll have some carry-forward dollars from this year, plus the board-funded capital budget for next year, and we'll continue to work through those projects. For example, the technology evergreening project that I mentioned, it's a project this year, it will continue into next year. Depending upon the availability of technology, you can probably be aware that with the recent conversations around US tariffs and whatnot, and a lot of technology gets sourced either through the US or China, there can be delays or disruptions to the flow of goods. So, it is possible that we'll see the carry-forward of some technology evergreening dollars into next year, which means that amount will be bigger than the amount that's strictly speaking in the budget. But we're not over-budget, we're just using the dollars that were approved this year, next year, in addition to the dollars that you'll approve hopefully with this budget on the 27th.
Thank you. Next, I have Trustee Dennis.
Thank you so much. And maybe this question will provide an equitable opportunity for multiple superintendents to have input. All right, so on page 17 of 34, it indicates that we have $145.1 million provided to address the unique equity factors in each school. So, just if you can share, if it's possible, what factors may feature most predominantly when deciding how that funding is allocated, and whether that funding is held back and distributed throughout the year, or will schools secure some of that funding in time to make staffing decisions for school opening for the 25-26 school year? And also, what impact does this funding have on an individual school? So, how can schools access and use this funding?
Through the Chair. First, I would highlight, this amount references both equity funds and funding for unique-setting schools. So, that's an important differentiation. So, in regards to your question, and the portion focused on equity that is distributed throughout the system, the factors that are most heavily weighted are variables associated with students who are identified with severe learning needs, EL students overall, and specifically at a language proficiency level of one or two, and students who self-identify as indigenous, and school variables such as absenteeism and the number of ins and outs. We also use demographic variables, et cetera, but those are the ones most heavily weighted, learning needs, and the introduction of a new variable for students requiring literacy and numeracy supports based on Alberta early years assessments. The funding allocated through the equity model means that schools with a higher number of students with a range of needs will receive a greater amount of funds than schools that are the same size. In regards to the next part of your question, these funds are mostly distributed through the RAM process, so meaning they actually were distributed this spring, so schools can plan appropriately for the following school year. This budget line also includes our criteria-based response fund that is used in both the spring RAM process and throughout the year after fall RAM to support specific student needs or classroom supports to increase enrollment. The two areas that quite often receive the most funding are areas three and four. And I think the other piece that you specifically asked, how does this funding get used? It's usually in human capital. So, it would provide extra education assistance, or teachers, or resource teachers, but potentially a few other resources when we're talking about, you know, targeted students that have special education, learning needs, or EAL learners, et cetera.
Follow-up. Trustee Dennis?
Thank you so much. So, happy to hear that the bulk of that funding is distributed through the RAM, so that principals then can prepare their school for the following school year. And so, is it fair to say then, schools who would receive some of this funding may see slightly smaller class sizes, again, additional EA supports within that building?
So, through the Chair, yes, they could see smaller class sizes. I will give you a concrete example of a school with high EAL, a middle school with about 650 students that had high EAL and increased number of students with special needs, would potentially see an increase in funding of equivalent to three to four FTE. So, that could be teachers, or they may hire education assistants, et cetera.
Trustee Dennis, go ahead.
Thanks. So, shifting gears to transportation. Did you get that little joke? No. Okay. So, on page 11 of 34, it indicates that students in programs, and so it says "in programs", that require specialized transportation services will continue to access those services fee-free. So, does this mean that only students within specific programs access the fee-free service? Or could be other students not enrolled in a specific program that could also be eligible for specialized transportation services? And then, just in general, what factors are considered when, you know, when we say that a student is eligible for fee-free specialized transportation services, and what options do we have in terms of providing those services to those students?
Through the Chair. As far as the first part of the question, in regards to students attending programs, that isn't our delineation. And so, what we're looking for is specifically what the individual circumstances are. So, the programs set a baseline, though, where we understand that typically speaking, certain programs would have students that require a certain level of specialized transportation. And then, again, even within those programs, though, we might see some instances where students might require more support to ensure that they're able to get to school and come back afterwards. And so, the same goes with students who might not necessarily be in a program. There is an exceptions process that students can go through, and they can be recommended for that through their school administration. And then, there's a team of specialists within the Calgary Board of Education that will sit down and assess various factors in terms of mobility, agility, their mental ability to process through various issues. And from those different considerations, ultimately land at a place where a determination is made as to what kind and what level of support is required. I'm wondering if I've completed my response, or if there's another question in there, trustee?
Just the options that we have in order to provide those services. So, and certainly, this is all fee-free service, but important also that it be safe, reliable, and so on, and suitable for that student depending on what their need is. And so, what options do we have in order to be able to provide that service to those students?
Through the Chair. Thank you for prompting me on that second portion of the question. We need to start off with the Education Act, and of course, the Commercial Vehicle Safety Regulation. And that sets some very clear boundaries in terms of what modes of transportation the Calgary Board of Education can offer. And specifically, within the CVSR, the Commercial Vehicle Safety Regulation, there's a requirement for school jurisdictions to use something called D250 compliant buses. And so, D250 compliance is a ULC term that speaks to a specific color, the orange and black, for example, the lights, a stop arm, those kinds of requirements for the bus. So, that is a starting point from where we can start looking at what that specialized transportation might require. Then, within that vehicle, there might be additional levels of support that could be added. So, staff that would be riding with the students, and depending on the level of need, maybe these are actually nurses that are traveling with the students to, again, ensure their safety and security during that transportation. We also have other modes that are available for students to use, and I'm thinking specifically here of Calgary Access. And this is, though, a mode of transportation that must be set up directly between the family and Calgary Transit, given how, again, under the Education Act and the CVSR, school jurisdictions are limited to a very specific type of vehicle in using or offering transportation services.
A follow-up, and then I have Trustee May. Okay, Trustee May, and then we'll come back to Trustee Dennis.
Thank you. I kind of have a bundle of questions, and I'm just going to put together with complex learning needs transportation. So, I'm wondering, have we seen an increase in ridership, or an increase to actual costs? I'm wondering, how are these students funded? How's this transportation funded? And what's the delta from what we're legislated to provide in the actual costs?
Through the Chair. So, the way the transportation grant is provided, it's not provided with the background information necessarily as to how it was calculated. That, though, does exist within the school funding manual. And so, we can sort of backwards engineer how that came to be. And through that, we can say that, based on that funding formula, we're receiving approximately $13 million, and that our total expenses come in, of course, that's what we are actually expending. So, the cost of providing specialized transportation come in at around $31 million. As far as your enrollment growth question, yes, just as we've seen enrollment growth in all of our schools, it has been, it has not left any student group immune to the growth. And so, we have seen increased numbers of students, and the same goes with inflation. Inflation has touched everything across the, sort of the common basket of goods. And so, we've also seen a corresponding increase as a result to our transportation expenses. And so, then, how is that covered? So, the additional expense above the $13 million that we're attracting is coming from the transportation grant. But of course, the transportation grant is given to the school board with some limitations, i.e. it can only be spent on transportation. But really, that's the only restriction that's imposed upon us. And so, from there, it's up to school jurisdictions to determine how to best provide transportation within the funding that's provided. And so, within the larger transportation envelope, this $31 million in expenses is able to be covered.
Trustee Dennis?
Thank you so much. Appreciate the answers to my transportation questions. Also, really appreciate the questions coming from Trustee May, and those answers as well. I think we know that transportation services is vital, but also very complex. And as indicated in the report, and this is due to direction from the Board, that the cost of transportation services does need to be balanced through the funding provided by the province and the administration of fees charged to families. And of course, we know that requires adjustments to service levels as well. And as a cost recovery through this budget, we're seeing a $100 annual increase to the transportation fee, which results to be about $36 per month for transportation services. So, considering there are a number of factors that we don't decide, you know, we don't decide how much funding we receive, we know that we need to offer specialized transportation services fee-free. And of course, the government has made recent changes to the eligibility criteria, which has had an impact also on services for next year. So, what are some of the cost-saving measures that CBE has considered and also then implemented in order to keep the cost to families as reasonable as possible, understanding there are many factors that we don't control?
Through the Chair. Many of the factors that ultimately result in cost savings also are those factors that we have been focusing on with laser focus these past few years because of the driver shortage. And essentially, that means, or it speaks to the desire to reduce the total number of vehicles, buses being used to the maximum extent possible because, again, of the driver shortage, this to help enhance service reliability. And by having fewer vehicles on the road, fewer drivers are required because those buses are more efficient, and that one driver with that one bus might be able to do more than one school. So, some of the examples I will share are things that you've been hearing of as of recently. For example, bell time changes. And so, aligning the bell times or the start and end times of our schools is a huge contributor to helping enhance service reliability and reduce expenses. Routing efficiencies, we are leveraging technology, including artificial intelligence, specifically machine learning that's embedded within Bus Planner, to make sure that those bus routes that are developed are as efficient as possible to optimize the collection of all the students. Wherever we can, we look to assign students up to grade six to Calgary Transit, or I should say, down to grade six, to Calgary Transit, to, again, then minimize the expenses being incurred on yellow buses and help reduce those costs, enhance reliability. Congregated bus stops is another example where, for those areas where we are not obligated under legislation to provide a service, but we know this is important for the families that we support, we provide a different level of service for families that choose alternative programming, and the congregated bus stop is one way of maximizing the use of our buses. And of course, competitive procurement, that is something that's built into everything the CBE procures and helps ensure that we're getting the best value for our dollar.
Thank you. I have Trustee Vukadenovich, and then Trustee May, and then Trustee Close.
On page 11 of 34, I read that the transportation grant is based on an estimate of total passengers. How How is this estimate of total passengers calculated? Is it a percentage of total CBE enrollment? Or is it based on a count of total yellow bus enrollment? Or is it based on the count of the total number of students who live outside of a walk zone? Or is it based on something more complicated?
Through the chair. So this is another Alberta education formula. And it's an estimate that's based on actual numbers. So if, I'll start with that. It is a little bit more complicated than just the total number of riders. And so we look at the total enrollment, or the province looks at the total enrollment within the school jurisdiction and will take 80% of that number. So then from there, there's deductions that are taken away from the total number of estimated riders. That first reduction is 55% of elementary schools. But this based on their average capacity or size, I should say, not capacity, but their average size. So how many enrolled students are in the elementary schools? So that is then deducted. The logic behind there probably being that normally if a school is getting fuller, you have more students that are able to walk to school. And so maybe not necessarily a requirement for as much transportation. The same then is done for junior high schools. It's a 35% value that's deducted. And the same again for high schools, a 25% value that's deducted. So that's the regular transportation side of the house. Then there's a component for specialized transportation. And that speaks to taking in 48% of what Alberta Education identifies as severely disabled students. And so typically, students that would have a code 40. And so 48% of those are calculated as part of the equation. Now for the regular program, the rate for the 25, 26 school year is $720 per student. That's what the grant allocation is. And then for specialized transportation, it's $3,790. And then that is how we're able to reverse engineer, if you want, how much of the grant is related to what students.
Follow-up trustee Bukedanovich?
I just wanted to just check my understanding. If I understood correctly, as our elementary schools and middle schools and high schools get more full, the formula used reduces, not increases, the transportation grant we're receiving. So in a time where we are seeing students overflowed to one school, sometimes there are two overflow schools. We have a school with three overflow schools. So as our schools get fuller and our students have to be transported further, this formula actually decreases the size of our transportation grant?
Through the chair. That is accurate. It is potentially a situation where the current situation, being so exceptional, was not contemplated. And yes, we're now in a situation where our average school size is getting, our population is getting larger and larger. And so more and more students are being deducted from this grant, despite the fact that we're actually having to require even more buses because of all of the overflow situations that you're referencing.
Follow-up connected to this. Go ahead trustee Hack.
Can you repeat the number that we get? So 40% of the students who are coded, code 40, receive $3,790, is that correct? Dollars. Is that, is that an actual amount that could be used to transport a student who requires specialized transportation? Is that a, is that a number that's average to transport a student like that?
Through the chair. What I will offer again is that our actual expenses are $31 million for provision of specialized transportation. And then based on this formula, the grant component for specialized transportation is approximately 13 million. So it's approximately two and a half times less than what would be required to cover our costs.
Thank you for that. Trustee May, to you.
Thank you. So it seems like there's quite a bit that goes into how much we charge families for transportation then. So it's covering for waivers, the delta for specialized services, it's our overflow, it's just not even having a community school. And now we have the new guidelines for how many new students we have to transport. So we're seeing an increase to $360 per year for this coming year. I'm wondering, is this adequate and long-term financially stable? Are families to expect a 100% year-over-year increase? Or how are we managing that and explaining that to our government partners?
Through the chair. So the last two school years, the transportation grant was increased by the government to allow those school jurisdictions who wanted to implement the shorter eligibility criteria earlier, the financial ability to do so. Within the Calgary Board of Education, we intentionally waited those two years to allow our service providers to build up their capacity, as I was mentioning, that bus driver and bus shortage that exists, while also wanting to confirm that there wouldn't be any changes. And lo and behold, certainly last December, there was a change to one of the distances, specifically from kindergarten to grade six. So that now when we will be rolling out, we will have, only, we won't have to be adjusting those again. Now with that being said, what that allowed for us to do was build up a certain surplus. And that surplus, we knew that when we were going to implement the new shorter travel distances, that would mean a higher level of service, it means more buses and drivers, that our costs would increase. And as had been signaled in the past two years, we've been counting on that to allow us to help stabilize any fee increases as we finally do roll out that, those new travel distances. So that is what we are doing. And why I'm mentioning all this is that for the next school year, we will be depleting that surplus. We will be fully utilizing that surplus to the maximum extent, again, with the intended purpose that it was set out for, for provision of transportation and helping stabilize the fee increase to students. And so where I'm going with that is that of course, the following year, we will not have the benefit of having a surplus to help with covering those costs. Meaning that assuming the transportation grant remains the way it currently is and that the values don't increase significantly that are allocated for both the regular and the specialized transportation needs, that we will probably require an additional fee increase because of the absence of a surplus to serve as a cushion.
Is this a follow-up trustee May? Okay, go ahead. Do you want to wait? And we will just call a brief recess. Welcome back. We'll reconvene our meeting. You may notice that trustee Dennis is not attending anymore. She has other board business to attend to right now. So we were, I believe, at a follow-up question with trustee May. So if you're prepared, feel free to go ahead.
Thank you. And please just fall off a bit of a birdwalk because I'm trying to connect some dots. So next year, we will have exhausted our surplus. And our benefits, our families did benefit from the surplus for the last two years. So we've been providing more transportation and shorter distances than previously required by the Alberta government. But now we're having to do it in a different way. So we have more students eligible for busing and how they get calculated has changed. And so the goal of the transportation distances from the government was to increase the amount of students eligible, be affordable, and hopefully not pass the fees along to parents. And so what we're seeing is a $100 increase, which is, to some families will be a lot and to some families might not be as much, especially if they're not taking Calgary Transit. But I'm wondering, what would be the value? Like what would be a monetary individual grant that would allow us to be, kind of stay within the same realm of the 360 or 260? Like what would be that number? What would have to change to the funding formula in order to still meet that goal of having more students on buses and it be affordable to families?
Through the chair. It's estimated that we'd require approximately $7 million in additional revenue through that transportation grant to be able to maintain the fee at $260 as it currently is for this school year. And so $7 million, the changes to the transportation grant, of course, that would be up to Alberta Education in determining how they might want to accomplish that, whether it's additional funding through the specialized transportation component, whether it's with the regular program or the regular transportation model, or a combination of both, or just simply an increase in the, you know, same formula, but an increase in the per rider rate. All of those are permutations of possible outcomes that could get us to that place where we would not have to adjust the fee.
Go ahead trustee May.
And just a quick follow-up, that's $7 million for this year. Do we know into the future what, we would need a significant change, I'm guessing? Because we're using up the surplus this year.
Through the chair. Good clarification, I omitted to indicate that that would be without the surplus. So that would be $7 million in '26, '27. So not the next school year, but the one after that when we've exhausted our surplus. That's the total value that would be required, all things being equal and recognizing of course, that there is a constant creep of inflation.
All right, trustee Close and then trustee Bukedanovich.
Unless there's more transportation questions, then I'll put my name back on the list.
Transportation, trustee Bukedanovich, go ahead.
Yeah, the last question I'd ask was about where we heard about the Alberta Education's formula for calculating the transportation grants. I'm still trying to recover from that. But my next question is, again, on transportation. The CBE strives to keep fees affordable for families. So who defines affordable? Is it CBE administration? Is it the Board of Trustees? Is it Alberta Education?
Through the chair. I guess I would start by saying affordability is often in the eyes of the beholder, obviously. When we talk about affordability, we look to being as efficient and effective in the program as possible so that we deliver them with the lowest possible costs. But as we've heard with regard to student transportation, for a variety of factors, many beyond our control, we have to charge a fee. When we do that, we make sure that the fee is only sufficient to cover the direct costs. And as you're probably aware, those direct costs include the provision of waivers so that no student is denied access to whatever the opportunity is, including student transportation irrespective of their financial circumstance. And the other component that is included in there is the cost of collections, which although there are nuances there, are directed at those who reportedly have the ability to pay, but choose not to. And we do that to ensure the integrity of the program. So back to we be as efficient and effective as possible with our programs. You heard superintendent Breton talk about using machine learning to make sure that the routes are optimized as a way of keeping costs down. And then we look to a fee that only covers the direct costs, but those direct costs continue to rise as with everything, labor, inflation, et cetera.
Follow-up trustee Bukedanovich and then trustee May.
Yeah, so my follow-up was, I was wondering why there is such a delta between the $84 per month for a Calgary Transit bus pass for youth and the budgeted $36 per month for CB's yellow bus service? But if I heard you in your answer just now, it's because it's only covering that level of service provided. That's why there's such a delta between the 84 and 36 per month?
The chair, so maybe I'd add a little bit more to that. So yellow bus transportation services pick a student up at a designated stop and deliver them safely to school and then return them the opposite way at the end of the day. That's what you get for your $36 a month. When it comes to Calgary Transit, what the student and family are getting is a pass that allows them to go anywhere in the city almost any time of the day that they so choose, including holidays, weekends, all those kinds of things. So there's much more value to the Calgary Transit pass than there is to a yellow school bus pass, if you will. I would also say that Calgary Transit and the city of Calgary have some pretty robust low-income programs for Calgary Transit riders so that if there is a family who is designated to Calgary Transit on a route that we've provided for through negotiations with Calgary Transit, there are fee programs available that significantly reduce the fee that they would pay and also connect them with other services and supports offered by the city of Calgary as a sort of consequence of applying. So I think there's great value in the Calgary Transit pass. But I get if you don't qualify for any of those things, yes, it's a difference between 84 and 36, or 87 and 36, but the service levels are dramatically different as well.
Trustee May, go ahead.
Thank you. I have a question on the table on page 7 of 32 regarding additional alternative address. Can you explain what this means again? I'm just wondering, does this mean they can take different buses on the way home? Is this something that the family will have a route to right away? Or is this based on availability once school starts?
Through the chair. So the ability to select an alternate address allows that student to be able to use, exactly as you were saying trustee May, a different bus or potentially different stops. So if you have a student who might be alternating between mom's place and dad's place, or if maybe on certain days, they need to be, to stay with a certain relative after school. It opens up those kinds of opportunities, same thing with daycare, et cetera. If the student is a rider that is identified under the legislation, so they're an eligible rider, they're attending their designated regular program school and they live outside of the walk zone, those students, if they apply immediately for the alternate address option, will have that immediately at the start of the school year. Conditional riders are really where somebody would not have that rate at the start because of course, they won't have the ability either to ride the bus at the start either because we make sure that we have space reserved for all of the eligible riders, those riders that are required under the law, before we start then filling up the spaces on the buses with those conditional riders.
Trustee Bukedanovich?
My next question is again on the transportation grant, trying to understand how that works. So when I think of transportation to and from school, to me, it's part of this whole continuum of how do families sort out what happens before kids, the school bell rings, and what happens, how families sort out that period after the school bell rings? Because of course, the school bells are not aligned with workdays because children need more time to sleep, they need more time to play. So it's a good thing that our school day doesn't stretch the length of a workday. But there is that period families have to sort out. So when it comes to this transportation grant, does Alberta Education provide the CBE with flexibility in determining at the level of each school, whether that particular school is best served by yellow bus service or arrangements with Calgary Transit, or arrangements with before and after-school care providers and/or a combination of the above? Is it purely a transportation grant that the CBE receives? Or do school boards receive a more flexible transportation and before and after-school grant from Alberta Education that school boards can then allocate as they see fit?
Through the chair. The transportation grant is solely provided to school jurisdictions for the provision of student transportation. And so there's that restriction. Then in addition, under the Education Act, there's some requirements in terms of who the school jurisdiction must provide for, who they must provide transportation for in this case. And it will also identify the types of vehicles that school jurisdictions must use. So within those parameters, then after that, it's up to school jurisdictions to determine how that service is provided. That's why you see the variation between, for example, somebody who is a That's why you see the variation between, for example, somebody who is attending their an eligible rider under the criteria, and that means that we must provide it within a certain distance from their school or a bus stop a certain distance from their home versus alternative programming where there isn't any restriction or any sort of conditions laid out on that front. And so how we've landed at the congregated bus model, where the actual bus stop might be actually further away from the alternative program school, but if that's what is required to ensure the service reliability and financial sustainability, it's something that we have to do, given the need to want to, again, keep our fees as low as possible. So we have that flexibility. What we what doesn't exist is an ability to require parents to enter into registering for that service or registering for before and after-school care. And so that is the optional part. So what we see from a transportation perspective is that approximately fifty five percent of those that are eligible typically will request the service. That's where we land at, but it isn't a situation where, you know, we could be entering into necessarily into an agreement that would include before and after-school care, but then require parents to be using that service, just as we can't require them to use a transportation service.
Follow up trustee Bukedanovich?
Yeah, because as I'm trying to understand how this transportation grant and the way it's calculated by Alberta Education and quite a bit of rules around it, such as I heard it has to be yellow, it has to have a stop arm, a lot of regulations around this. There's with the change in eligibility, there are some schools now that are being added to to the transportation eligibility. We were really, it's just a few students at the very perimeter of the school that that are eligible for for the busing, and and the entire school has to change their bell times to accommodate what could end up being a very small number of yellow bus riders. So I'm wondering, in a case like that, where there are potentially very few yellow bus riders, is CBE obligated to organize? Is one of these rules that we have to abide by, is it an obligation to organize yellow bus service so children's arrival and departure coincides with school bell times and the availability of school staff supervisors? Or would CBE be able to organize the yellow bus service with the understanding that there's a there's a gap that parents would then be obligated to fill however they wish, whether it's signing up for before and after-school care or getting creative and coming up with other with other solutions? So I'm wondering if whether organizing yellow bus service outside of divorcing the two is within the realm of possibilities that the CBE could consider to manage this service within the limited provincial transportation grant, or whether that's one of the rules that that govern how we address this?
Through the chair, so the CBE aligns its transportation services to ensure that they are arriving within that fifteen-minute-ish period before the start of the school day, because that is when Calgary Board of Education staff will be present and can provide supervision at the school. If we were to provide that transportation service and arrive much earlier or much later after the end of the school day, then there's a responsibility there that the CBE, who has collected these students, must continue. And if those parents choose not to utilize before and after-school programming, and I think I omitted to comment on that, there is no grant specific to before and after-school care. That is something that is completely conducted by a third party, and that those transactions happen between parents and the service providers. So if those parents chose not to avail of that service, then the CBE would be placing itself at risk in the sense of bringing a child, a student, to a site and then not leaving them unsupervised for a period of time until such time as school staff finally arrived and were able to provide that supervision.
Thank you. I have a question related to fees and waivers. So we know that in the CB, no student is denied access to their public education and that we have a comprehensive waiver process to support families unable to pay fees, be that the student supply fee, transportation fees, or lunch supervision. So seeing twenty-three percent in waived fees, I guess I'm wondering, is this sustainable? And how is it impacting those who are able to pay their fees? And if this wave number continues to increase, in that we might potentially be seeing increased transportation fees and the costs themselves increase of busing drivers' gas, at what point does this structure become unsustainable? Like, is there a tipping point we should be aware of?
Through the chair, to the chair, I would start by saying undoubtedly there's a tipping point where that is, I don't know. When you look at that twenty-three percent, also keep in mind that there's two components that make that up. About sixty percent of the twenty-three percent is waivers, and the other forty percent is related to the collection activity. So those are the two components. The amount, that twenty-three percent amount has been relatively stable over the last while. Our working hypothesis, however, is that as the fees continue to increase, that will likely head up, but we're not seeing that in any dramatic terms just yet. So I don't think we're at a tipping point, but we're certainly at a place where we want to be very mindful of what fees look like going forward. As you're hearing from superintendent Breton with regard to transportation, there's so many aspects of transportation of which we have no ability to control, and that applies to a great many fees that we charge. We don't take revenue from fees, it's essentially a cost pass-through. So if you want to go to the zoo as a grade three class, the cost of zoo entry is in the fee, and the cost of getting the students to and from the zoo is included in the fee, plus, as we talked about, perhaps some waiver and bad debt costs. So as those costs go up across the various providers of those services, we pass those along through our fee. We have convened a fee committee, as was referenced. Its task is to look at fees, the programs, or sorry, the activities that we provide that attract fees to try and keep those under some level of of control so we don't, you know, inundate families with, you know, a hundred fees for a hundred trips. It might be just two or one or whatever it might be. So we try and manage it from that perspective, but because we essentially pass through costs and are susceptible to so many things over which we have no direct control, we just keep an eye on it, and hopefully we don't get to that tipping point anytime soon. If we should get there, we'll probably be having a significantly different conversation.
Thank you very much. I have one more question. On page five of thirty-four, it notes that, in theory, the new funding model, which is essentially the two-year versus the three-year weighting average, would largely address the loss of the supplemental enrollment growth grant. I'm assuming we have to wait to know the actual impact this will have, but how do we plan ahead or account for this funding change in this upcoming budget?
Through the chair, so the entirety of the provincial funding has been incorporated into the budget that we're looking at today. So we don't need to wait to see what the impacts of the supplemental enrollment growth grant are, because it's been removed and they've inserted a new two-year rolling average, and that's generated the one point four four two billion dollar number that we see in the budget report. So no concerns there about having to wait for anything. What we're more curious about is, does government come out over the course of the year with new things, as is often the case, and how do we incorporate those into our operations? Because government likes to roll out new programs focused on new things, and so we just await those announcements, and then we'll do our level best to make sure that the funding is directed where it's intended to meet the needs of students.
Thank you. We have trustee Close?
Thank you, and this is a really specific question, and it's on lunch supervision on page ten of thirty-four, seven dash thirty-one. With the changes in bell times, can you comment, you know, right now we have a proposed single lunch fee program for four-day supervision? And I can't help but ask this question, does this mean that for an elementary school with a Friday early dismissal time of twelve fifty-six P M., that students will not have a lunch break? So I'm assuming there's nutrition breaks of some kind built in, but no supervision by lunchroom supervisors? And I feel like we are at the tipping point, perhaps, with our lunch program, even though it's cost recovery. But could you comment on what eating food will look like with the new bell times?
Through the chair, lunchroom supervision supervisors will remain the ten hours per week going forward into the twenty-five, twenty-six year. Historically, you have referenced there was a four, and we've shifted to a four-day-a-week program. Over the past year, there was a five-day-a-week program. There were less than ten schools all through Calgary Board of Education that were using that model, and so moving forward with the four-day week. In the past, principals made this decision during the spring RAM process based on their ability or need to offer a Friday break. Individual schools created weekly timetables to ensure provincially designated instructional time minimums were met. As part of this upcoming school year declaration process that happens in the spring, schools may choose to offer a Friday program if efficient time is available, and each decision would be made to ensure compliance with the Alberta Nutrition Guidelines for children and youth require a minimum of twenty minutes for students to eat. If a Friday lunch break is added, lunchroom supervisors would be scheduled across a five-day instead of a four, while still maintaining that total of ten hours per week. There are opportunities currently where nutrition breaks are added, and each school's weekly timetable staff are scheduled to provide supervision during that piece of time, and it's potentially its educational staff principal determines the length of these breaks, ensuring that they do not affect the scheduled morning recess. And so always wanting to attend to and make sure nutrition breaks are typically supervised by teachers, where that lunch hour break, that noon hour break, is supervised by noon hour supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you. There was a little issue I noticed, and I just lost trying to scroll through the report. Oh, yes, on page nineteen of thirty-four, the second last paragraph references that OE5 includes a board policy requiring CBE administration to maintain an operating reserve at a minimum of three percent of prior year operating expenses. I thought that the Board of Trustees had amended this policy, so is it possible that this paragraph was mistakenly included in this report?
Through the chair, so in conversations with the corporate secretary, just to gain clarity, my understanding is that while the board policy has been changed, we have not yet amended the reasonable interpretations thereof. So we're kind of in a hybrid space right now, and so we've referenced the rate that was indicated in the reasonable interpretation, although it's not currently referenced in the policy, if that's correct.
That is correct. Trustees, any other comments and questions on the budget document before us? Seeing none, this item will be placed on the May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five agenda for the board's consideration. Our next item of business is the chief superintendent's update. Chief Superintendent Pittman, would you please introduce the report?
Through the chair, I have lost my speaking notes, so I'm going to go off of memory. The chief superintendent update is provided regularly to the Board of Trustees to highlight actions being taken across the system that support two elements. One, and first and foremost, the board policies, such as operational expectation two, teaching and learning environment of students, or operational expectation three, instructional program, asset protection, and so on. It also reflects alignment to the education plan and provides further updates around actions being taken across the system. You will have seen that today's chief superintendent update is lengthy, detailed, and comprehensive in the way that it reflects our priorities connected to staff capacity building in key and specific areas, ways in which our staff are learning about the use and application of artificial intelligence, or, as has been a significant discussion around this table, how it is we support students with special education needs and the professional learning that has been provided through the broad range of expertise that exists within our system. Additionally, you'll also see highlighted actions that are being taken through various other service units, further in support of board policy and specific actions. And I want to highlight the incredible coordination that has occurred, especially as we prepared for the non-instructional day that was offered across the system to employees of all types and roles that significantly supports key operational aspects that needed further teaching and learning, or to highlight resources that are available. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Pittman. Trustees, do you have any comments or questions on the report? Trustee Close, go ahead.
Thank you, and I do really appreciate the chief superintendent's update, and it is detailed, but there is one area that has just gone over my head. So it's on page nine of eleven, nine thirteen, under OE six, asset protection resource booking. I don't think I understand the definition of resources in this in this update. So what is it, and how is it used by staff?
Through the chair, the resource booking is a web-based tool developed for schools. Teachers administrators support equitable access to all technology, specifically laptops, computer labs, shared rooms, robotics, and other shared resources, and it also has data analytics, reporting tools to see its use. Chair Close, trustee Close, sorry, trustee Close, the days of booking the laptop cart with a paper binder or a clipboard are gone, and we now have a digital process of doing that. And what's really nice in this is that we can also get the analysis of their use, whether that be robotics or the laptops, and to also inform our TAP strategy.
Thank you. I actually just wanted to mention a couple of things I noticed, and it is the amazing range of PD opportunities that our staff has. So I got the calculator out, and I think I calculated over thirty-seven hundred staff members were able to participate in these PD offerings. And I had a question, and I also one more comment. The question was, is one of these offered, is it system-wide PD days or after-schools or Friday afternoons with early dismissal? Are they during school days or a combination thereof? Actually, I'll pause and just feel free to answer that one.
Chair Bolger, to answer your question, first of all, most of the summary in this document and this chief report, it are regards to the April twenty-first professional learning. So the two thousand staff who participated in the Wellbeing and Physioeducation Forum, there's nine hundred and sixty staff that participated in A I professional learning, there was over a thousand staff that actually attended the language symposium. So many of these are summarized for the April twenty-first, but in regards to your question, we do offer professional learning on Friday afternoons or throughout the school year, but much of the summary is regarding that April twenty-first, which was a designated day for professional learning for our staff, and that the staff actually had choice in those decisions.
Well, that is astounding, like, that's incredible. I thought you were going to tell me my math was off, but that's not it. The other thing that's so encouraging to see is that we are such a strong partner with Alberta Education and that we are able to offer up the CB's expertise, be it through teacher leaders or leaders within our system, our specialists in supporting Alberta Education through the development and analysis of curriculum supports or draft curriculums, piloting, implementing, so I just want to say kudos to that. I think we're a really valuable partner, and that's great information we can provide to the province. Any other comments or questions on the chief's update?